Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6 on September 8. Please, this meeting will now come to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you please call the roll?
Director Azari. Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Five board members, present.
Thank you. Well, welcome everyone to, um, the first month of school has been well underway. Um, I also, sorry, wanted to introduce, we have our student representative from the Council of Student Representatives, um, Senior Sarah Vanegas, she is the president, um, for the Council of Student Representatives, and we're so glad to have a student presence, um, in our board meeting, so welcome. Hope you're off to a great start with your senior year. Um, we have, um, a number of proclamations to give this evening. It's always fun to celebrate, um, our students, to celebrate our partners, and, um, so welcome special guests this evening. Um, I, uh, was cheering my heart out for the, for the Bears this weekend, and, uh, we all know who won that game, so go Bears. Um, let's see, I think that's about all I have to say. Um, so, my, my agenda is not coming up, does anyone have the printout? Well, okay. Okay, so at this point, uh, we need to approve our agenda, it's an action item requiring a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you please give us a vote?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Um, so our first special item is a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 25th of 2025. This is also an action item requiring a motion. Anyone? Are you experiencing technical difficulties? Can you just make a motion?
I move that the Board of Education Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Um, Mr. Bentley, will you please read the proclamation in English? And Dr. Campos Fizzi, will you read it in Spanish?
Thank you for letting me read this in English. Proclamation recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes and celebrates the significant contributions of Americans tracing their ancestry to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas observance of Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 through an act of Congress declaring National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was later extended to a month-long celebration. And whereas more than 62 million Americans are of Hispanic and Latino descent, whereas 14,940 students in the Greeley-Evan School District 6 are of Hispanic and Latino descent, making up 64.6% of the entire student body. Whereas the contributions of Americans who are of Hispanic and Latino descent in the field of science, politics, medicine, education, art, music, writing, public service, and many other careers have greatly enhanced and advanced these fields, improving the lives of all Americans. And whereas the art, food, dance, music, and culture of Hispanic and Latino Americans are part of the colorful weave of the, in the fabric of all American culture. And whereas District 6 graduates, graduates of Hispanic and Latino descent have and will continue to contribute greatly to the cities of Greeley and Evans, enriching our communities and advancing our businesses and economy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 recognizes and celebrates September 15 through October 15, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all employees, students, families, and community members to honor our citizens of Hispanic and Latino descent and recognize their immense contributions to our communities, our state, our nation, and our world. Given under my hand and executive seal of Weld County School District 6, this eighth day of September 2025, Natalie Mash, President.
Thank you.
All right, en español. Proclamación honorífica de la Mesa Directiva de Educación del Distrito Escolar 6 del Condado Weld. Proclamación reconociendo las fechas del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre del 2025 como mes nacional de la herencia hispana, donde el mes de la herencia hispana reconoce y celebra las contribuciones significantes de americanos que han rastreado su linaje a España, México, Centro y Sudamérica, y a los países de habla hispana del Caribe. Y donde celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana comenzó en el año de 1968 a través de una ley introducida por el Congreso declarando la semana nacional de la herencia hispana y la cual después fue extendida para celebrarse durante un mes completo. Y donde más de 62 millones de americanos son de ascendencia hispana y latina. Y donde 14,940 alumnos en las escuelas del Distrito 6 de Greeley-Evan son de procedencia hispana o latina cubriendo 64.6% de la población estudiantil. Y donde las contribuciones de americanos de procedencia hispana o latina en los campos de la ciencia, política, medicina, educación, arte, música, escritura, servicio público, y en muchas otras carreras que han logrado avances y grandes mejorías en estos campos, mejorando la vida de todos los americanos. Y donde el arte, comida, baile, música, y cultura de los americanos hispanos y latinos forman parte de la estructura social y colorida de toda la cultura americana. Y donde graduados del Distrito 6 de procedencia hispana o latina han y seguirán contribuyendo grandemente a las ciudades de Greeley y Evans, enriqueciendo nuestras comunidades y mejorando nuestra industria y economía. Ahora, por lo tanto, se proclama que la Mesa Directiva de Educación del Distrito Escolar 6 de Greeley-Evan reconoce y celebra del 15 de septiembre del 2025 al 15 de octubre del 2025 como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y alienta a todos sus empleados, alumnos, familias, y miembros de la comunidad a honrar a nuestros ciudadanos de ascendencia hispana y latina y a reconocer sus inmensas contribuciones a nuestras comunidades, a nuestro estado, nuestra nación, y a nuestro mundo. Otorgado bajo mi mano y seño ejecutivo del Distrito Escolar 6 del Condado Weld este día 8 del mes de septiembre de, del 2025, Presidente Natalie Mash.
Thank you both. Um, are there any comments on the proclamation? So, oh. Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, I got to enjoy Fiesta in the Plaza. I think it's the third year, uh, the Mexican-American Heritage Project in Greeley hosts that event over in Island Grove at the Centennial Museum. And it was a beautiful day, we had great weather. My kids enjoyed every drop of it. I thought we were only gonna stay for one hour, but we stayed for three till the very end. Um, and so kudos to everyone who organizes that very successful event, um, that celebrates, um, not just Mexican-American cultural roots in the United States, but specifically in our community of Greeley and Evans. Um, and I mentioned this at the work session, but wanted to invite the community at large. Um, the Greeley Philharmonic Orchestra on November 1st, at the UCCC at 7:00 PM are gonna be, um, performing a series of songs titled Songs For You or Canciones Para Ti, a celebration of the Day of the Dead, Una Celebración del Día de los Muertos. And the music they will be performing will be from Celia Cruz, Rocío Durcal, Ramón Ayala, Jose Jose. Um, so it sounds like it's gonna be a fantastic performance. Go on the UCCC website and get your tickets. Thank you, Dr. Campos. Ms. Vanegas?
Thank you, President Mash. I'm Sarah Vanegas. As a student that is from Hispanic descent, making up that 64.6% in our student body, I can't express how proud I am that the district recognizes and, oh, oh, sorry, that the district recognizes and celebrates the Hispanic and Latin cultures, but not only are they celebrating the culture, they're also celebrating the hard work of our students, our teachers, and our families as well. I'm grateful to have this position as a student representative here with all of you board members, and especially being able to proudly represent the Hispanic and Latin community of our District 6. Gracias, Distrito 6.
Thank you, Ms. Vanegas. Yes, I am very pleased that we get to celebrate the majority, um, of our, of our students and their families and our staff as well. Ms. Lemon, will you please give us a vote?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next special item is a proclamation.
I apologize to interrupt, um, we do have somebody here to accept that proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, who do we have here to, I think we have, um, Candy? Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, please come up.
Candy Gonzalez.
Candy Gonzalez, thank you for coming. I'm sorry, I am experiencing some technical difficulties this evening.
Faculty, families, and students of Greeley 6, on behalf of the Hispanic community, we are honored and deeply grateful to accept this proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. This gesture is not only a celebration of our vibrant cultures, histories, and contributions, but also a meaningful affirmation of the diverse voices that shape and strengthen our Greeley community and District 6 schools. As you know, Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to reflect on the legacies of perseverance, creativity, and resilience that defined our past and inspire our future. From the arts and the sciences to education and public service, Hispanic Americans have played an essential role in building this nation. And continue to enrich our classrooms and the Greeley community every day. We want to thank you for your commitment to fostering inclusion, representation, and cultural pride. We look forward to continuing to work together to ensure that all students and the families feel seen, heard, and empowered to reach their full potential. Thank you again for this recognition.
And I have a copy of the proclamation for you.
Can I get a picture, Natalie?
All right, our next special item is our proclamation for UNC Week.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 declares September 22nd through September 26, 2025 to be recognized as UNC Week in District 6.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Matthews, will you please read the proclamation?
Certainly, President Mash. UNC Week in District 6, September 22nd through 26, 2025. Whereas the University of Northern Colorado, UNC, has been located in the heart of Greeley since the university's founding in 1889. And whereas UNC is among the top public universities in the United States, and is particularly renowned for its College of Education and Behavioral Sciences, which produces some of the best teachers, principals, and administrators in the nation. And whereas the University of Northern Colorado is Weld County's institution of higher education and provides an excellent, affordable, and accessible education to hundreds of District 6 graduates every year. And whereas many hundreds of UNC graduates have gone on to work in District 6 schools and offices, including 385 new teachers in 20, in the 2025-2026 school year. And whereas the University of Northern Colorado and Greeley-Evan School District 6 engage in a robust partnership that greatly benefits both institutions. And whereas UNC's annual Homecoming Week for 2025 begins on Monday, September 22, and runs through Sunday, September 28, 2025. And whereas it is appropriate that all school districts help recognize, celebrate, and support opportunities for quality education, higher education for students and community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 declares September 22nd through September 26, 2025 to be recognized as UNC Week in District 6. And that district staff and students be encouraged to wear UNC apparel that week and to proudly display bear flags, pennants, and banners during Homecoming Week.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, are there any comments on the proclamation, Dr. Campos Fizzi?
So, um, two of my favorite months aligned, UNC Month and Hispanic Heritage Month. I was telling my friend Dina before, um, sitting up here, that I, I was so close to getting a Vamos Osos shirt, and it would have been perfect for tonight, but I couldn't get myself organized enough to get that done. Um, but I wanted to add a few whereas's, not really, not officially. Um, but, um, I did wanna point out that UNC in, among all of public research universities is number two for lowest average student debt. So that's a pretty cool number to be at the bottom two of those, of those schools. And then 96% of our students receive some type of financial aid or scholarship. I think that's a great number to brag about. And that 44% of our students at UNC are first-generation students. Um, so really cool things. And in 2026, we are looking forward to welcoming our first class at the, at UNC's proposed College of Osteopathic Medicine. So I do think next year we'll have to add a whereas line, um, because we're only the third medical school in the whole state of Colorado with a mission, uh, to train doctors who are interested in serving, um, areas with physician shortages, which include rural areas and, um, urban underserved areas, uh, like places with community health centers. So, so proud to represent both District 6 and UNC tonight, um, and looking forward to giving y'all this proclamation.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, President Mash. Um, yeah, I just wanna say how, um, how fortunate our students are to have this university in, uh, in Greeley. And it has been such an amazing partnership that we've had. Um, when we talk about concurrent enrollment and the importance of concurrent enrollment in getting our students to, to college, uh, a lot of that concurrent enrollment comes through, through UNC. And, uh, not only that, the opportunity that our students have with the Greeley Promise Program to, to go to a university, to a four-year university, and to get a college degree. I don't know that there are, are quite that kind of opportunity, any, I don't know, uh, what the rest of the nation has, but I know that not every student in Colorado has that kind of opportunity. Our students are tremendously blessed to have this university, uh, right here in Greeley. Uh, such an incredible university, and so we're so thankful and thankful that you're here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I will just also echo the sentiments, and as a proud, um, UNC alum through the nursing program, um, yes, I thank you, thank you for, um, for the many years of being a pillar in the community and working with District 6 and, and helping to make, um, make our city a better place. So with that, we will take a vote.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And I believe President Feinstein is here to accept the proclamation.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am very pleased to accept this proclamation recognizing UNC Week in District 6. And I want to thank you, President Mash, and all the members of District 6, Board of Trustees, I mean Board of Education, and Dr. Pilch, thank you so much for your support, your partnership, your friendship. It means a lot. And trustee Campos Fizzi, thank you for all the wonderful things that you said. Keep that up, I love it, so. You know, as you noted, there is a longstanding and evolving partnership between District 6 and UNC. UNC offers the broadest array of teacher education programs leading to licensure in the state of Colorado. In fact, UNC has produced more than 50% of all educators in Colorado. Many people working in the district have a connection to the university, which we heard. Who else has a degree from UNC in the audience? Look at that. That is awesome. Go Bears! Additionally, our collaboration helps support students this fall. There are 241 new full-time degree-seeking undergraduate students enrolled at UNC from Weld County, and nearly 55% of them being from District 6 schools. And we would like many, many more than that. We are proud of our work together implementing a direct admissions program to give easier access to a UNC education and its benefits for all these six students. We know the benefits of education to individuals, their families, and their communities are quite significant. More education is, for example, correlated with higher lifetime earnings and better health outcomes. As people are questioning the value of education, we are even more eager to continue to work with our District 6 colleagues to help find ways to have more students pursue post-secondary education at UNC so that they so also can realize their career goals. I want to thank all of you for this wonderful award and recognition, and thank you to our students and our community. Go Bears! Just don't talk about football with me right now. Thank you.
All right, and our final proclamation is to proclaim Constitution Day, September 17, 2025. Someone please read the, or make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the proclamation declaring Constitution Day, September 17, 2025, as presented.
Second. Mr. Norwood, will you read the proclamation for us, please?
Sure, thank you, President Mash. Proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6. The proclamation is in support of Constitution Day, September 17. Whereas the United States Constitution is the foundation of our nation and the supreme law of the land. And whereas the US Constitution was adopted in a constitutional convention on September 17, 1787, and thus established our system of government and secured and guaranteed the rights of all free citizens of the United States of America. the rights of all free citizens of the United States of America. And whereas the United States Constitution stands today as one of the oldest written documents of its kind in the history of this nation as a result of the efforts and great cost to the patriots that founded our great nation, the United States of America. And whereas informed citizens are necessary to exercise responsible civic knowledge and ensure the preservation of our constitutional republic. And whereas the students and the faculty of the schools within Greeley Evans School District 6 are best served when they study, discuss, and reflect upon the meaning of our U.S. Constitution. And whereas Wednesday, September 17th, is designated as U.S. Constitution Day, and that September 17th through September 23rd is designated as U.S. Constitution Week throughout the United States of America. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Weld County School District 6 Board of Education on this eighth day of September, 2025, hereby declares the official observance of September 17th, 2025, as U.S. Constitution Day, and September 17th through September 23rd as U.S. Constitution Week in 2025. In humble respect for the patriots from our past that gave their all so that their fellow citizens and those yet unborn in our nation should remain free in perpetuity to enjoy the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Be it further resolved that all schools shall hold educational programs about the Constitution and its importance to our democracy on U.S. Constitution Day. Weld County School District 6, by Natalie Mash, President, Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on the proclamation? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And Dr. Pilch, we will now receive our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Mash. Lots of good news to celebrate tonight. So I'm going to start first with sharing some news around our CMAS testing, our state testing achievement results that have now been released. And we've been meeting individually with board members to share those results, but I want to share a little bit with the community and for those of you who haven't had a chance yet to meet with us. But we are seeing some of the greatest achievement and growth that we've ever seen in District 6 on our CMAS results. We have 18 schools that are rated at performance. So as you all know, schools were rated at turnaround, really bad thing. I think that when I got here in 2015, we had eight schools, three on turnaround, and another eight on priority improvement. So all those schools were what was considered on watch in the school district. And so you could have turnaround as the lowest rating. You don't... we don't ever want to go back there for our schools. Then priority improvement, then improvement, and then performance. And we have 18 of our schools at performance, which is truly a celebration here in District 6. It's the most, I believe, that the district has ever seen. And we're seeing the number of schools on priority improvement decrease, as well as the number of schools on improvement decrease as those schools move into performance. So very excited about these results, and just want to give a huge shout out to all of our educators and our students who have worked so hard for us to realize these results. And then I want to share just a couple of highlights. For the first time ever, every middle school in District 6 is at performance, and that's really exciting, yeah. Really exciting, and due to a lot of very intentional work. In addition to that, I'm going to give a special shout out to McAuliffe K8 STEM Academy. In English Language Arts, they are outperforming the state at every single grade level. I mean, it's just truly remarkable. And I want to recognize several of our schools. Several of them are outperforming the state averages in growth and achievement, both our... some of our charter schools as well as our traditional schools. So just really pleased at the work that's going on. And I will just say, we know, we know we still have more work to do. We still have schools that are at, a few schools are priority improvement and improvement. And we know we've got to move those schools to the performance level. And we have the staff committed to do that, and we know the right work to do that, and we're committed to doing that work. So really happy to share and celebrate those results with the community and with you all as the board. Couple other celebrations this morning. At Greeley Central High School, the staff recognized Claudia Kessler as the Colorado High School Counselor of the Year for 2026. This is a recognition that is given by the Colorado Counselor Association, and Claudia was nominated by one of her colleagues, Deb Heck, who supervises counselors here in the district. And they were able to recognize her this morning for that tremendous honor. And so check out the Facebook page. I just saw some new pictures were posted from the celebration this morning. And then last week, we had the honor. And I have shared with you all before that Stephen Paulson was a semifinalist for Colorado Teacher of the Year out of over 400 nominees. Well, last week, the Colorado Department of Ed and the Betcher Foundation came in to Greeley Central High School to honor Mr. Paulson for being a finalist for Colorado Teacher of the Year. And so tomorrow, some of the folks from that selection committee will be here at Greeley Central High School, interviewing some of us, asking us, why? Why should Mr. Paulson be the Colorado Teacher of the Year? And so we're just so proud of him and his deep dedication. I really had expected him to be here tonight. We invited him to come to be recognized as a finalist for the superintendent's honor role. And he is so humble. He said, "No, you've already recognized me as a semifinalist, and there was this big recognition at the school, so I don't need another recognition." But I didn't want tonight to pass without sharing with you that great news. And we have a video that I think Mr. Osmus is going to hit the play button on to let you see a little bit, to capture a little bit of that celebration on Thursday when Colorado Department Ed and the Betcher Foundation came in to recognize Mr. Paulson. Thank you, President Mash.
Thank you. So many things to celebrate. Our next portion of the meeting is dedicated to our public participation, and I believe we have one person here to speak with us. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. Our speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond, but we may ask our district staff to do so. All written testimony or handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not permitted. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. Speakers are responsible for their own speech and should refrain from profane or obscene remarks. All remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. This board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. And our speaker tonight is Ms. Michelle Selgren. Thank you, Ms. Selgren. You'll have two minutes.
Hello, board. Thank you for your... Thank you for your time today. I find it important to be civically engaged, parent. I know a lot of parents don't come here and visit with you guys, and they often expect things, but they don't communicate them to you. As Commissioner Buck often says, it's important to be involved in your community and engaged. So today I'm coming to you to talk about my concern for the safety of students at Greeley West. I don't feel that Mr. Cranston takes it seriously, especially with comments that I've heard from him, like, "You can talk to the board about that, I don't care." Or, "I don't think a no-contact contract is necessary," or "Kids will be kids." I have noticed frequently kids at Greeley West High School being out of control. Security guards playing favorites, and even accepting gifts from kids to look the other way, or to let them go of the off-campus thing. Also, teachers telling security guards that kids need to go to class, and security guards ignoring teachers. Kids have faced... my kids have faced many issues at the school, including kids smoking in classrooms, kids smoking in the bathroom, kids in class that are not registered to attend that class, money stolen, broken bones, scratches on necks, unwanted advances, and more. And it's very frustrating because victims are often left with no recourse, because if they fight back, they will probably be in trouble too. The other thing that I have confronted a couple of times is the school resource officer telling you that if you want to do anything about this, that your child will also be facing consequences. So today I just wanted to come to you because I hope that we can change the environment at Greeley West and make it safe for everybody. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time as well. Our next item is to approve our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please give us a roll call vote. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Our next item of business is to revise some policies. And this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the revisions to K school-community home relations policies as presented.
Second?
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, do you have anything to add? Most of these updates are changing wills to shalls, or shalls to wills, and things like that. All right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will you please give us a vote, Ms. Lemon? Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And revisions to our J student policies as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the revisions to J student policies as presented.
Second?
Thank you. Is there anything to add on these, Dr. Pilch? Okay. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
Yes. So, Mr. Fall, I have some questions about policy J I H, student interview searches and arrests. And so largely, it looks like our policy will remain the same. The only thing I'm seeing added is weapons and metal detection systems. Can you give us more background as to why this is being added to the policy?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. So this is being added to direct the Chief of Safety and Security, who's Wade Corless, to develop regulation related to weapons detection or metal detection systems. This is currently already happening at some of our schools with the handheld wands that we discussed last year. Just knowing that there has been a really large increase in weapons throughout our community over the last three years. I don't know the specific data on that. I would turn to the Chief of Safety and Security to answer those questions. But we just felt that it was in the best interest for the board to provide kind of notice to the community that perhaps we'd be using weapons detection systems moving forward at some large events. This is not going to be a plan to put them in all of our buildings. Of course, if that were to happen, we certainly would have more discussion on that. But it's just to open the door to allow for weapons detection systems in some limited circumstances. Again, and I defer to our Safety and Security Department for determining when those events may be, because they're best fit to decide kind of when we would be using those.
Thank you. So just for the sake of transparency and to repeat some of the things you just mentioned. So we are not adding this with any plans of doing stand-up medical... I keep calling them medical detectors, metal detectors, in any of our schools. That is not why this is being added at this time.
That's correct. It's not going to be something that we're going to put at all of our buildings before school starts. You know, perhaps there may be a day where that happens. I can't predict the future, but that is not the purpose of adding this into the policy. It's really for large events, in places where, open-air events, where there may be concerns that somebody is possessing a weapon, but not for just day-to-day school operations.
Dr. Campos Spitsy, we do realize that before we would consider weapon detection devices or metal detection devices at a school site, that we would need to have substantial dialogue with you all, as well as with parents in our community and our staff. The other thing to consider is, these devices, because they do detect a weapon, do require an armed security officer at the device, at least one, if not two. So we would be looking at a substantial financial investment to be able to fully implement weapon detection devices at the front door, say, at our high schools. I believe you all are aware that we currently have regulation that allows our schools to use the wand-ing devices for the detection of weapons or the detection of apes in school, and in an effort to decrease the use of apes in schools. And so this policy, that will actually codify this in policy and allow, you know, the use of those within our school sites.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Yes, and if I could just add one more thing to Dr. Pilch's statement. Anybody who's involved with these metal detection systems or weapons detection systems will be trained. And of course, if there is a search, that will all be done in accordance with our policy as written. So we're really making sure that the right people are doing this and are involved, and everybody will be trained who's using these systems.
Is there any other discussion or other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you please give us a vote? Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Our final item of business is to approve the District Accountability Committee membership. This also is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the membership of the district and school accountability committees as presented.
Second?
Thank you. And do we have a district member coming to present this?
So, good evening, President Mash, members of the board, Dr. Pilch, and our member from the Council of Student Reps. My name is Anthony Osmus. I serve as the Assistant Superintendent for Secretary K Leadership. As per state law, the following actions are required by local school boards: Approval of the District Accountability Committee and approval of the school accountability committees. Each Board of Education is responsible for either appointing or creating a process for electing members of a district accountability committee. The process we use in District 6, as outlined in the bylaws, is to have a representative from each school serve on this committee. A complete list of the members for the 25-26 school year can be found in your materials. Based on the state law reflected in the District Accountability Handbook, the Board of Education charges the district accountability committee with specific responsibilities throughout the school year. These responsibilities include submitting recommendations to the Board of Education regarding how we spend our district dollars, providing feedback for our district unified improvement plan, and reviewing any charter renewals and applications. Also, at each meeting, there's a superintendent's forum where Dr. Pilch shares important information and solicits feedback on various items, which is always everyone's favorite. Furthermore, each school is also responsible for establishing a school accountability committee. The duties and responsibilities are very similar to that of the district accountability committee, but are at the local level to provide input, feedback, and direction to school leadership and the principal. And you have a list of these members as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Osmus. I believe we have a few comments. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, President Mash. I just wanted to say thank you to our parents especially, but also our teachers and administrators who serve on these committees. This is a wonderful way to serve this district. It is also a lot of time for the individuals who serve on our SACs and on the DAC, and we just want to say that we appreciate the time that they give. And so, thank you.
And, and we just want to say that we appreciate that, the time that they give. And so, thank you.
I second that. Thank you. I get to serve as the board member representative, representative to the District Accountability Committee and is such an engaged group of parents and community members. They ask great questions. They have wonderful insight, and they're excited to walk alongside us as we serve the students of District Six. So I don't see any other comments. I will take a roll call vote, please.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. That is all the business we have for this evening. Thank you for being with us or joining us online, and see you in a couple of weeks. Meeting is adjourned.